To me. Says the Medrash. Hashem tells Moshe. Ma titzachar li. Why are you crying out to me? Heim kvart saku. They've already cried out to me. And therefore, I've heard their prayers. Why do I need your prayers? You are Moshe. You are unbelievable. You are above everyone. And in fact, we're not talking about Moshe in contrast to a very righteous person. We're talking about the people who left Egypt, which we say were had sinned. By the yamsof, by the sea. The sea did not want to split for them. Why should I save them and drown the Egyptians? They both worship idolatry. They were not at the highest level. You had on one extreme, the prayer of a Moshe. And then you had the prayer of the ish, of the prayer of the simple man. And Hashem said, I don't need your prayers, Moshe. I'm trying to allow myself to be seen. So I can see myself only. Hashem says, they're all equal. That's the lesson. And I don't need their, I don't need your prayers. I've got theirs. It's good enough. That's the lesson of Machis Ashakel. If you are high, if you're wealthy, lo yarbe. Don't think a lot of yourself. That's good. Keep doing what you're doing. Don't lord it over anyone else. If you're poor and you don't have a lot, you haven't financial resources, you struggle in life, economically, physically, emotionally, or spiritually, you are bereft. You do not have a lot. Lo yarbe. You're all bainanim. You're on the path. And your prayers are valued by Hashem. That's one lesson we can take from. One moment, that's one lesson. I'm trying, Rabbi Smith. It's, it's a little distracting. When I see other people moving in and out. Is there a way I could allow my, I could pin myself? So I only see myself.
I think I could watch him call it. Yeah, I could make you the speaker spotlight for everyone.
Okay, thank you very much. That helps. Thank you. Okay, that's number one. There's. Forgive me, I just have to stop. Okay. Another, I think there's another lesson to learn from the Machis Ashakel. Not in the fact that everyone gives a uniform amount. But in a way, in the way, once the coins were collected and they were stored in the temple in a room. And there were many, many, I mean, there were hundreds, there were millions, perhaps millions of coins. They had to be collected three times a year. Three times a year. They appointed one person to go in and take out the coins they're going to be using to purchase the sacrifices they will be needing in the upcoming months. And the Mishna tells us something unique about this person. That we are afraid that this, we're afraid. Maybe a fact, we have to be very careful that the person going in is unable to steal the coins. I just want to pull up and share the screen for a moment. It's really not that important. Okay, the Mishna says, I guess I'll read it in English. Can everyone see the screen in front of you?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I'm just highlighting it in the, on the left side here. The Mishna says that the person who collects the coins, he's not allowed to enter it with pants or a robe that has a hem on it. He can't go in with a kamehah, with like a piece of jewelry. He can't go in with sandals or shoes. He can't go in with thillin on. Why? Because if you have, I'm gonna take this off already. Or at least, uh, stop this. Not allowed to go in with anything that can hide or secrete, where he can secrete the coins. The Mishna says, and again, if you have cuffs in your pants, you can stick them in your cuff. If you have some charm bracelet or a necklace, you can stick it in the charm. If you have thillin on your head and the minhug used to be the halacha was people work thillin all day. You could open up the thillin, hollow out, take out the scrolls that are there, hide a few coins in there. And then the Mishna elaborates. It's not that we're afraid he's actually going to steal. But if he becomes wealthy after this, he went in and he collected millions of dollars, whatever the amount is of points. And he comes out. If the next month or two, he happens to buy a summer home in the Hamptons, people are gonna say, you know why? You know why he got all that, how we got all that money? He stole from, he stole off the back of the hardworking Jews. And if he has to sell his house and move into something else, if he becomes poor, people are going to say, it's divine retribution. He stole money from us and God's getting back in him. And, and it's very important, says the Mishna, to make sure that people do not suspect you of things. As the posse tells us. You have to maintain purity. You have to be clean in the eyes of God and the eyes of man. And it also says, you have to get along with God and with people. There are several questions that present themselves over here. First of all, who is this person who we're sending in? It's not a nobody. It's not some person who has a criminal record. This is the Torah. He was specifically selected for this job. You know, bank tellers, you know, are held to a very high standard. If they would, if they would take home a pen from the bank, I believe they will lose their job. This guy probably is very, very honest. He's not a thief. Yet, we have to be afraid he might steal. And how is he gonna steal? He's gonna stick it in his ham. He's gonna stick it in his, stick it in his thillin. Like, how likely is that? How many coins can you put in there? And then what does it say? It doesn't say we're afraid he's going to do it. It says, if he becomes wealthy, people will say, ah, he became wealthy by stealing our coins. If he became poor, oh, he became poor because this is divine wrath. God's getting back in him and he lost his wealth. Now, if a person becomes wealthy, is that a sign that he stole? It's the only reason why you find a person hitting it rich because he's a thief. We have plenty of wealthy people we know. There are ha'hamim in the Talmud that are described as being phenomenally wealthy. Yet they were the epitome. They were the, they were the standard of ethics and honesty. A person who's poor. Does that, oh, he's poor because God's getting back at him? He's a dishonest person who stole? God's taking away all of his money. We have a famous person in our history, Hillel Hazuki. The great Hillel. He was an abject copper. I'm sure he would have something to say about that. It's very unlikely Hillel stole and that's why he became poor. It's very unlikely that Rabbi Elizabeth Carsom, who had a thousand cities that he controlled and a thousand ships went out on a daily basis. It's very unlikely the Gemara goes out of the way to say how impeccably honest he was. So wealth and poverty is not a symptom of dishonesty or cheating. Why is, why, why are we afraid of that? And then the two really don't make sense. They don't work well together. People are going to say, if he became wealthy, ah, he must have been a cheat. If he became poor, God's punishing him. One second. If the same God punishes him and makes him poor, why did that God let him cheat and become wealthy? But if you believe that there is a God who will administer divine justice, how does the guy become rich and steal? Where's the God at? That's, how can a person, what is this? What it seems to be indicating, the Mishna is, this is such a, such an unlikely occurrence. The odds of people stealing it dealing with an honest person. How much can he possibly take out? That he becomes rich off of that? He sticks a few coins in his thillin? That really what's going to happen? And then they seem to be mutually exclusive. The person who's gonna feel, oh, he's rich. He became rich off of our backs. That means he doesn't believe in God punishing cheaters. And the guy who thinks, ah, he became poor, must be that he stole and God's punishing him. But why didn't he punish him when he became rich? How do we put all of this together? Rabbi Ramcha, which is Shiva in power of it ass, says a very nice thought. He says that the Mishna is not concerned. And when we send this person in with all these safeguards, the Mishna is not so much describing, you know, you have, we have to be careful. This guy doesn't steal our machsis hashakel. That's not the concern. Because how much is he gonna steal? Is he actually going to steal? Will this make him rich or poor? What the Mishna is describing is a human condition. That people sometimes are critical of others. That people, if they don't like another person, they will find fault with the other person. If they don't like another person. Forgive me. They will twist the narrative to equal what they want. If you don't like someone, you're gonna find anything to pin on that person. On the other hand, if you're unlikable person, then people will excuse things. Just because someone does something or something happens, you're not going to go ahead and assume the worst about the person. But if you're a person who's unlikable, if you're a person who others have a reason not to like, to find, to be critical of. And you're a critical minded person also. And there are critical minded people in life. Then you're going to look and find whatever it takes to point fingers, ah, look what he did. He's getting punished. He got rich off of our backs. What the Mishna is telling us, we're not afraid of, we're not really afraid he's going to steal. What we are afraid of is that there are people in life that don't look positively at others, that have a negative, critical eye. And you have to protect yourself from that. And that's how the Mishna, that's what Mishna is trying to do. Therefore, the Mishna starts. Number one, don't walk in there with the method of, don't walk in with clothing that you can hide coins in. Because people are gonna go ahead and say what they're going to say. Even though how many coins could you possibly steal? It's not gonna really make you wealthy. But people will say, if you hit it rich afterwards, if you got a good stock, it's stock tip. Stock tip, stock tip. Oh, he probably stole our coins. People are gonna go ahead and say those things. And you, and the zepusak. You have to go out of your way to make sure that you stay clean and honest, both in front of, in Ba'az eyes and in man's eyes. But then the Mishna adds one thing. It's a very hard thing to go ahead and be respected. If you're dealing with people who are going to be naysayers and look to criticize, how do you protect yourself from this? In fact, there's a chuvah from the Chassam Soper. The Chassam Soper, great Rav in Hungary. He wrote a letter to a student of his where he says that my entire life, I have worked hard to avoid being accused of doing the wrong things. And he said, it's harder to have a good reputation in people's eyes as it is in God's eyes. It's easy to be a good person in God's eyes. Just do the right thing. But to be a good person in other people's eyes, it's not up to you. Because those people might not like you. Those people might, you know, could be the most trivial thing. They find something wrong with you. You had a, you had a conversation with them. And you weren't friendly enough. And they get kicked off and they remember that. It's very hard to make, to ensure that you have a good reputation with others. That's why the Mishna adds an extra phrase. I go back, let me just share my screen again if I might. Forgive me, I perhaps should have left it up. Mishna says. It's important here. As a person must appear justified before people, just as he must be appeared justified before God, as it says, you shall be guiltless before the Lord and before Israel. You have to go out of your way to make sure that people don't, Hashem doesn't think you're doing anything wrong. And people don't think you're doing anything wrong. But then the, then the Mishna adds one more verse. And the verse states, so you shall find grace and understanding in the sight of God and man. What's being added over here is, what we already know, you have to be guiltless before the Lord and before Israel. What's this new phrase? You shall find grace in the sight of God and of man. What's being added is that the way to go. The way to ensure that people do not think that you're doing anything wrong is to be a person that people find great in you. To be a kind, decent person. You could send the most honest person into this room with all the coins. And if he has thillin on his head or he has an eye patch, people are gonna say, you know, he probably has a coin stuck in his eye patch. The Gemara goes so far as to say, maybe we should send him in after having drunk some water that he, and he has to keep water in his mouth. And we talk to him and he can't talk. Because maybe he's gonna stick some coins in his mouth. Where is this coming from? That we're so overly concerned? It's because people will say what they say. The Mishna is telling you is, you want to avoid that. Number one, of course, be completely honest. But you have to find grace and good understanding in the sight of God and man. Not only act, not only don't steal, of course, but be a person who people will want to respect. Be a person who's kind to others, who's thoughtful, who's friendly. Because if you're that type of a person, if you're a likable person, people will like you. And they're not going to go ahead and cast expersions and be critical of you. If you are not a person who have, people have, v'nimtsa chay. If you're not a person who comes across with grace and kindness and charm and pleasantness to others, you're not likable. And that's when people are going to go ahead and look for anything and say anything. And the naysayers will naysay. And the criticizers will criticize. So the Mishna is, of course, is telling us how we have to use this, how we have to go through life. The best thing is, it's not a matter of only being honest. Because we accuse honest people all the time. And we're suspicious of people. Be a person that people respect in life. That's another lesson we see from here. There's one more thing that we can learn. And yet, that one thing we can see from the machsis hashakel, from the half coins that are given. And this relates to the yom tef of Purim. Many people say, everyone's probably heard that Purim and yom kippurim, of yom kipper, is described as a yom in Hebrew. Kippurim means like Purim. So somehow, yom kipper and Purim are related. And when I was a kid, I remember hearing, yeah, after what people do on Purim, where they get drunk and they go wild and they do idiotic things. They need a Purim, they need a yom kipper to atone for that. It's probably, that's not what it means. The Zohar, the Kune Zohar says that Purim is called, it's yom kippurim, that yom kipper is like Purim. Because just as Purim is a festive, happy time now, in the future, yom kipper will be a happy and festive time. But there's a connection between yom kipper and yom kippurim. The Zohar says something incredible, showing us again a deeper connection. The Zohar says that the highlight of yom kipper was when the coing gudel went into the Holy of Holies, the Keter Chakadashim, with the incense, with the katoris. And that is, at that time, the ultimate in forgiveness was achieved. Here you had the greatest person, the holiest person going into the holiest place, the holiest time of the year. That's the highlight of the service on yom kipper. Yet the Zohar says, there's something, there's someone else who was just like the coing gudel going in on yom kipper. Esther, when she went into the king's throne room unannounced. The Zohar says that when Esther, as the Torah said, the Megillah says, Esther dressed in her royal garments, that's like the coing gudel putting on his royal vestments, his big dekahuno. Esther going into Achashveirosh uncalled for, that's like the coing gudel going into the Holy of Holies with the katoris. And the question is, yeah, yom kipper, yom kippurim, it's a real serious connection. But what does it mean? The coing gudel is going in doing the most exalted act. Esther, we say, when she went into the king's throne room at that point, after not being called. And she was, they say, we say she became forbidden to Mordechai. She's now, she became lost to her people at that point. She actually, she was married to the king. And he was married to Haman. I don't know if everyone knows that she actually was married to Mordechai at the same time. And the reason why, even though she submitted herself and had relations with Achashveirosh, she didn't become forbidden? It's because it was involuntary. She had to do it. She had no choice. The Gemara says, the Talmud says, now that she went in voluntarily, she becomes forbidden to her husband. How could we equate Esther going into the king's throne room with the coing gudel, yom kipper going in with the katoris, with his incense? What's the connection? So many swarms say, explain it as follows. The Alshach says, why is it that we give a machsis hashakel? A half a coin? Can't give more, can't give less. It's gotta be a half. But why is it a half? Isn't that a little cheap? You know, you give a person, if someone asks for a handout, you know, you don't give him half a sandwich. Give him a whole sandwich. Why do we give half a coin? Our custom is that on Tinas Esther, this up in next week, this coming week, on Thursday, our custom is that we also give half a coin. We give, we take a 50 cent piece. The coin of our realm is a dollar. We take half of that, a 50 cent piece. We would give whatever a shekka was, we gave, why a half? So the thought is said, and it's an old thought. Haman's coming to destroy us. That's the story in the Megillah's Esther. Does Haman have the power to kill a Jew if he just wants to? In fact, Haman bought the rights. He offered the king a fortune of money. Says in the Megillah, 10,000 talents of silver, whatever a talent is. 10,000 kikre zoh, kikre kessa. Interestingly, Osu says, we say that those 10,000 bars of silver equaled 600,000 half shekkel coins. The amount of coins that were given, as we are told to give in this week's parsha, that's what was offered by the king, by Achashveirosh, by Haman, by the rights to kill the Jews. And the Gemara says, by us, the Talmud says, when we gave our coins in the desert and we give those same coins every year, that overcame the coins and that money that Haman offered to buy the rights to kill the Jews. But how does that work? Haman wants to kill Jews. He offered the king a fortune of money. He didn't accept it in the end. Talmud says, our coins that we give overcome his coins. How does that work? The explanation is because Haman cannot come with all the money in the world and harm the Jews. We have a God who protects us. But God will protect us when we're worthy of protection. And Haman struck us when he, we were down. United, we stand. Divided, we fall. Haman told the king, his words were, there is one nation among your provinces that is spread out and scattered. So yes, it means that there were Jews all over his 127 provinces. But it is also taken to mean that Haman was saying, we are spread out and scattered. We are not united. We are fragmented. We do not have achthus. We do not care about one another. We are self-absorbed. I am work, I care about myself. I don't care about you. There is a nation that is spread out and scattered. And what Haman was saying is, it's the old motto, united, we stand. Divided, we fall. Haman was saying, we are, we are spread out and scattered. We do not have unity. And when we do not have unity, when we do not have achthus, our defenses are down. And we are ripe for the picking. If that, and that's why, and that, that's what Haman meant. We're spread out and scattered. What was the cure then? The only way to overcome being spread out and scattered, being united, not having achthus, not living and I care about you as I care about myself. That, the antidote is to get back together. And that's exactly what Esther said. Esther told Mordechai, go and kanos, like the kineset. Go assemble and gather all the Jews. Right now, the Jews are fragmented. They are not united. They are not gathered. And we will fall. And Haman has the ability to harm us. Gather the Jews together. And if, because if we will be united, we will stand and be able to overcome the onslaught of even a Haman with all of his money. The way we went and accomplished that, or the tool that helps us get back together, unite and be as one and overcome Haman's claim that we're fragmented and united. and overcome Haman's claim that we're fragmented and separate. The tool that allows for that is the machas hashach. Because everyone again asks, why is it a half a coin? The answer is, says the Al-Shach and many others, is because we're supposed to learn from the half coin. That I'm only a half. I need your half to become a whole. In the immortal words of the poet, "No man is an island unto himself, we are all part of the whole." We contribute a half a coin every year to remind us, to symbolize that no matter what I am, as great as I think I am and as arrogant as I feel, I'm only a half. I'm not perfect. I need you to be perfect. I cannot do it alone. It's not only that I'm not perfect. I'm, I cannot be whole without the other person. If I'm succeeding and someone else is not succeeding, there is a problem and we will suffer. In fact, the Talmud gives a fascinating, maybe it sounds simplistic, example for the mitzvah of the hafta lereacha kamocha. You have to love your fellow like yourself. The Talmud's example is if you have a knife in your hand, in your right hand, and you were, and you were cutting and your knife slipped and it cut your left hand, are you gonna now, is your left hand gonna now pick up a fork and stab the right hand? Of course not. Because you're all, it's all, you're the same person. You're only hurting yourself. That says the Talmud, is the attitude we have to have towards others. I'm doing well, I have my needs met. If someone else doesn't, I have to feel that I'm suffering, that I don't have what I need. When we live that way, when we feel that way, then hashach, then we are able to be successful. And we'll explain in a minute how. We overcame Haman's coins. We overcame Haman and his desire to kill the Jews with our coins. Because his desire to kill the Jews, it's not, it wasn't his desire. We were worthy of being harmed because we were fragmented and separate. The coins that brought us together. Gather all the people together and bringing a coin, a half a coin, shows you and reminds you, I need you to become a whole. And that's why everything about Purim has to do with achtes and unity and celebration and friendship with others. That's why there's mishlo Hamanos sending gifts. There's gifts to the poor, there's gifts to our friends. There's a festive meal with others because we wanna all get back together. Haman had, Haman's argument was, we're not united, we have to get united. That's how the coins worked by Purim. How does this work? Does this play out somehow by yom kippurim? Very interesting. And yom kipper, we present ourselves before Hashem and we're gonna be, we're gonna be righteous, we're going to do the right thing, we're going to turn over a new leaf. I'm gonna do all the mitzvahs. And yes, we hopefully will. There's an interesting problem. We can't do all the mitzvahs. There are 613 mitzvahs. The rabbis tell us that it relates to the 613 parts of our body. And if we're missing a mitzvah, we're missing the nourishment, the spiritual nourishment that our body needs. Okay, I'll do all the mitzvahs, but we can't do all the mitzvahs. Some mitzvahs are only on Kohanim, not on Yisrael. Some mitzvahs are on Yisrael, not on Levite. Some are on a levy and a yisroel and a coing. But a king has extra mitzvahs that no one has. No one person has all 613 mitzvahs. So there's an age-old question. How can a person have completion of all 613 body parts through the performance of all 613 mitzvahs when no one is obligated in all 613 mitzvahs? And there are two basic answers that are said. One is, that's the greatness of learning Torah. Because we say that the study of Torah, if you cannot perform a mitzvah, but you study about that mitzvah, it is as if you have vicariously fulfilled that mitzvah to a degree. The other way of accomplishing all the mitzvahs, the rabbis tell us is, if we are united, if we are, if we live by the hafta lereacha kamocha. If my success is your success, if your distress is my distress, if I view you as another limb in my body and I wouldn't stab my other hand with the, with one hand, if we all view ourselves united and one, then Hashem looks at us as one united Kholiyit Shroel. If we view ourselves and we care to the degree, you are part of me and I am part of you. Hashem, I might be failing, but Hashem, he's doing good. His stuff counts for you. What he's done counts for you, what you have done counts for him. And as a whole, in totality, we have a beautiful Jewish people that is worthy of blessings. That is what the coing gudel going on yom kipper into the holy of holies with the incense, with the incense symbolizes. Because how do you make incense? This is a thought from the Ramah, Rav Moshe Isselus, one of the great, 500, almost 500 years ago, one of our great rabbis. Says, incense, you take spices and you pound it, you pulverize them, you break them down. And you, to, you know, like powdery fine, it's like baking powder. On yom kipper, there's a special commandment. He brought incense every year in a, in a certain place in the temple. On yom kipper, we bring it in the holy of holies. The Talmud says that all year long, we would pulverize and make the incense. On yom kipper, we would grind it extra fine. Explains Rav Moshe Isselus. When you have a powdery fine, you know, incense, you can't find one piece of it. It's, find me one piece. It's all, it's powder. You can't isolate one part from another part. The coing gudel going in on yom kipper with the powdery fine incense, begging for our forgiveness? He went in with the strength of the katoris, the united Kholiyit Shroel behind him. Yeah, forgive the people. I were not maybe worthy of forgiveness? But no, we, there are individuals that are not worthy of forgiveness. Explains the Ramah. But as a whole, and that's what the one, that's what the unindivisible incense symbolizes. We are as a whole, successful, accomplished, good. There is good in Kholiyit Shroel. That now connects yom kipper with yom haki Purim and Esther going into the king's throne room with more, with the coing gudel going into the keter chakadashim. Just like the coing gudel goes into the holy of holies with the katoris, symbolizing the fact that Yisroel is completely united as one and you cannot find a separate part of Yisroel and they can be looked at as one amorphous body and therefore judged that way. Esther going into the king's throne room was with the strength of the now unified Yisroel. More, Haman said, they are spread out and scattered. We can get them now. The cure was the hafta lereacha kamocha. Go beg Esther to Mordechai, gather all the Jews. Get them to realize that we have this ability to unite. We have been bringing the machas hashach for thousands, well, at that time, it wasn't that, thousands of years, a thousand years. Close to a thousand years. We have this ability, symbolized, taught us by the half coin. I'm only a half, I need you to be a whole. And therefore, putting this all together, Esther was able to go in with that united Kholiyit Shroel, like the coing gudel going in and Hashem forgave, saved us then and he gives us salvation and forgiveness on yom kipper as well. Rabbi Smith, is it a good time to stop?
This is so incredible, so beautiful, such gems of wisdom. I don't wanna stop you, if you have one last little vart.
I have one, one more thing that I think, unrelated, but I think it's very good. If, and again, I-
Go for it, go for it.
Okay, very, very quickly then. Um, we just read, we just read yesterday, parsha zochar. There's a mitzvah to read publicly. The, the event of a commandment to recall how Amalek, where Haman comes from, Amalek's attack against Israel and our command to destroy Amalek. The mitzvah of zochar is to remember what Amalek did. Really a beautiful thought. I had the possek, I should open up the possek. The words in, the words in parshis ki seitz are as follows. "Behayah behiniach Hashem alokacham mikol ayveham misaviv." It will be when Hashem frees you or gives you rest or gives you leave from all the enemies around you. "Timcha ezehar Amalek." Destroy the zechar, the memory of Amalek. Two questions. Amalek's one of our enemies. Amalek is the arch enemy. So when it says, when Hashem gives you least rest or freedom, I mean, the real word is leave, but when Hashem gives you freedom from all the enemies around you and destroying Amalek. Amalek's one of our enemies. Why aren't they, or are they not included in those words? When Hashem gives you rest from all the, and it doesn't say, when Hashem gives you rest from all the other enemies, then Amalek will be your last battle? No, when Hashem gives you rest from kol ayveh, all your enemies. Why isn't Amalek included in that? And then what are you supposed to do? "Timcha ezehar Amalek." Eradicate, destroy the zechar, the memory of Amalek? What exactly does a zechar Amalek look like? What are you supposed to, what are you supposed to point your gun at? Like, obviously, zechar Amalek is telling me something, but I mean, it doesn't say to kill the people of Amalek. It says to kill the zechar Amalek. What does that mean? And then one last question, which I really think is a novel one. Whenever you have a military victory and, or something monumental and you would have a yearly commemoration of that event, you have the commemoration on the day that it occurred. For example, V, I don't know if any of you are as old as me and remember, but VE Day, Victory in Europe Day, which someone told me yesterday, was on May, is celebrated on the 8th. VE Day is celebrated the day that the Germans laid down their weapons, when the German High Command, whoever remained, formally signed papers. You celebrate the day of the win, the day of the victory, the day of the miracle. You know, we celebrate Pesach when we left Bitts Ryan. Purim, we do not celebrate on the day of the miracle. The miracle, what happened? On the 13th, Haman, there were the letters that were now, kill the Jews. And the king could not retract those letters because it would be a sign of weakness, but he empowered the Jews to defend themselves. On the 13th, when we were supposed to be annihilated, we fought and we won in 100, in the entire empire. And we rested on the 14th. Says the Megillah, you fought on the 13th, you rested on the 14th? Celebrate Purim on the 14th. In the capital city of Shushan, they had to fight an extra day. You had a lot of Amaleki, Haman's friends there. We fought on the 13th, the 14th, we rested on the 15th. That's why we have Shushan Purim. We celebrate in a walled city, like Shushan was a walled city, you celebrate on the day that they rested. Why are we not celebrating on the day that the miracle occurred? That the victory happened? Why are we celebrating the day after? Maybe the idea is, all the swarms tell us that there are two components to Amalek. There are the people of Amalek, there's the nation of Amalek. And then there is the little bit of Amalek in each and every one of us. There's the negative influence, influence that we've been impacted with. And we have to eradicate both. We have to get rid of the people of Amalek and we have to also, and we also have to purify ourselves, getting rid of the ill effect and the Amalek and the negative lessons and messages that we've picked up. What do you have to destroy first? Do we have to wage an internal war? Cleansing ourselves from the ill effects of Amalek? Or is it an external battle against the people of Amalek? Maybe, maybe what you have to first do is fight the external enemy. Because if you're going to go ahead and, you know, seek and destroy cleanse yourself and purged yourself from the influence of Amalek, but Amalek's still out there. The contagion is still out there to reinfect you. You first have to destroy the people of Amalek and only then can you sit back, take stock, make a rejbon hannefesh, see where you are in your life, see where we've veered off and get back on the right path. On the 13th of Ador, that's when we fought the people of Amalek, or in Shushan, on the next day, on the 14th. We fought the people of Amalek on the 13th and the 14th. It was only the next day when the people of Amalek were destroyed, when we are now given rest from our enemies, our external enemies. Oh, oh, I didn't even, I didn't even, oh, I didn't even explain, I didn't even explain the possek, forgive me. That's how you read the possek now. It will be when Hashem gives you rest from all the enemies misaviv around you, all your external enemies, and that includes Amalek. Our arch enemy, then destroy the zechar of Amalek. Get rid of the memory of Amalek. The lingering effect, the impact they have within yourselves. I forgot the whole thought. That's why we celebrate Purim the day after the military victory. On the 13th or the 14th in Shushan, that's when we beat the people of Amalek, the enemy misaviv outside of us. It's only on the next day when we were able to sit back, take stock and see where we are and make ourselves right, that's when, that's when we celebrate Purim. Because yes, we have to fight the external enemy, the enemy misaviv, but then we have to get rid of the zechar, the lingering effect. And I hope all of us have a truly enjoyable Purim and a meaningful Purim.
Thank you so, so much.
Thank you.
This was-
Thank you Rabbi, thank you Rabbi.
Beautiful and very incredibly insightful, beautiful vart. The last vart, is that your own? Amazing, amazing. I loved it. Beautiful. Incredible. And the other vart as well. At the, the one or two of them, I think, there's similar vart that the rebbe actually said, a similar vart machas hashach and things. Okay, yashakayach, wow, this was a great preparation for Purim. I really, really appreciate it. And I'm sure we'll, Mitzvah Shem, I hope we'll be able to have you back on other occasions and yashakayach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Rabbi.
Thank you.